Have one item that we need to address at the end of the city council and it'll be very short, so just want to remind the council members at the end of the regular city council meeting. So this point I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting, today's September the 4th, 2019, along with the Finance and the Housing Department. So at this point, I will go ahead and call for the invocation. I believe we have two pastors, am I correct? We have, oh Pastor Flores and Pastor Jackson, if you could please step up to the lectern, appreciate that. So at this point, I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you Mayor, Council, and citizens for attending this meeting. Let us pray. God, we pause on the onset of this meeting to be reminded that in the midst of tragedy and trauma and chaos, God, that you are present and you're comforting and you are leading and guiding us. Lord, we just pray for those who have been affected by just recent tragedies from the East Coast to those on the West Coast and for the families that mourn and grieve loss of life today. We're mindful, Lord, just how precious life is and how you bring worth and value to that. We pray, God, that you would just be present, comfort, heal, and allow families, parents, grandparents, Lord, to be able to continue to walk toward you. We thank you for our mayor and our council and all those that serve in public office. Just your wisdom be upon them tonight, Lord, as there's decisions, discussions, deliberations that in all this, Lord, we would honor you, Lord, and serve your people effectively and efficiently. Lord, I thank you for Pastor Jackson, Lord, and his leadership too.
Heavenly Father, we praise you and we thank you, and I thank you for the city council to allow us to come together in unity and pray, as I was standing. I was just thinking, Lord, that they're the kings and the leaders and they have the religious rulers that are behind them, praying for them, advising them, Lord. And Baldwin Park had opened up the doors for us, and I just thank you, Lord God, that you hear our prayers and answer our prayers, Father God, that you will have mercy upon our children and our schools, Lord God. You will have mercy upon the parents and bringing the parents and the children together in unity and in one accord with one another. We thank you, Father God, for the city, Lord God, as they have the businesses that are here that are opening, that the city shall prosper, Father God. And there are the Police Department and the Fire Department, Lord, your mighty hand upon them, Lord, as they are rolling around the city, Lord God, to protect our city, Lord God, that you will put your hand of protection upon them, in the name of the Lord Jesus. And Father God, as we go forth, may we go in power and authority and may Baldwin Park prosper in everything they do, in the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Want to first of all, thank Pastor Jackson and Pastor Flores for being here today, leading us in an invocation. And I also want to close on behalf of two individuals. First one, thirty-seven-year-old Giovanni Rey De Pedro, well-established musician, individual who went through St. John's School and went on to get his doctorate in music as well and traveled the world. Unfortunately, he succumbed to a virus when he was overseas and ended up in Indonesia where he passed away. So there are services for this beautiful family that have contributed to the city Baldwin Park immensely. So our deepest condolences goes out to the De Pedro, Trina Rimi, the daughter, and all the family members. And I know that there is seven different sessions that they will be attending for the church for Giovanni, and I believe it's on September the 28th at St., is it St. Christopher's?
Yes.
Excuse me?
Nine thirty.
At nine thirty a.m. will be the final and from there. So we just want to make sure that we keep this beautiful family in our prayers. Been in Baldwin Park for many, many years. The second individual also is David Casper, or Mr. David Casper, was a teacher in Baldwin Park High School from 1962 to 1995, an electronic teacher, also track, cross-country as well, and well-known. I mean, this person was an icon in the city Baldwin Park, no doubt. Condolences goes out to his immediate family. We were honored to have both the mom, the son, and a daughter attend the actual street market last week, so we did a shout-out, the audience did a shout-out for Mr. Casper, and we're looking forward to the services. And again, he will be well-missed, and this person brought a lot of happiness and joy and also trained me in trying to beat my time of the 5K there, that when he was there as well. So our deepest condolences goes out to this person who literally knew hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of individuals, and very active also at Mount San Antonio College. Back in 1953, actually, he broke a record as a runner himself. He was a track runner and a cross-country runner. So he is with us in spirit, so our condolences goes out to Mr. David Casper, and of course, condolences to the beautiful family, and we'll await the services as well. All right, so at this point, council members wishing to close on anyone's behalf? If not, at this point, I will ask the city clerk, Ms. Gina Ayala, for roll call. Or is it the city treasurer?
Me, I'll go ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Present.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Monica Garcia?
Mayor.
And Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we do have a proclamation, the 2019 Suicide Prevention Week proclamation. Who, is there someone that's going to be, are we presenting this to someone? Oh, oh, okay, all righty. First of all, come on up. Well, if you could come up to the lectern, and let me just say that it's very important for us to, of course, recognize the seriousness of this, of this particular proclamation that we're presented. I think a lot, a lot of, so much has happened, and of course, rapid-changing world that we live in today, much different than it was 25 to 30 years ago, and it's important for us to reach out to our youth and of course, to our adults as well. Suicide affects everyone in a distance, does not discriminate in the age group, and it's important for us to reach out and to talk to someone, and it's important for us to be able to continue this path and to have you here as representatives of this proclamation. It's very important. And I'll read it. It says, "The 2019 National Suicide Prevention Week from September 8th to the 14th. Suicide is the tenth-leading cause of death in the United States and the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the age of 10 and 34. It is estimated that there are over 1.1 million suicides attempts each year, and the United States, one person completes suicide every 12.3 minutes, resulting in over 44,000 suicides each year. Suicide has increased every year for the past decade. In 2017, California experienced 4,324 deaths due to suicide, 10,048 hospitalizations, and 34,371 emergency department visits for injuries due to self-harm, and over 90% of people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, and often that condition is not recognized or treated. Organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention envisions a world without suicide and are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicides throughout, through research, education, advocacy, and resource. Kaiser Permanente's Educational Outreach Program and the NIMI on-campus high school clubs strive to reduce stigma on mental illness, educate, and increase awareness and suicide prevention." I just want, also, let's, I've worked at an actual place called Los Encinas Hospital, which is in Pasadena, some of you may or may not be familiar. Of course, it's changed ownership. I used to work there when it was owned by Hospital Corporation of America, and working there for the 15 years, I literally learned, you know, that a lot of people, as they here, are stigmatized, and they're stereotyped, oh, the person's not, not well, and so on and so forth. No, those are very serious indicators for those of you that are affected by potential suicide, that we need to look and continue to promote and foster this particular field, because I've seen young individuals that were brought there that were, you know, on the verge of suicide, and some that follow through. So it's important for us to make sure, and I'm certainly happy that Kaiser and that the schools are also fostering these types of programs, because those kids and those students and those adults as well, they, they need to be reached out and be there for them and comfort them and not stereotype saying the person is crazy. I mean, those are psychological things that need to be dealt with, and it's important. So I want to say that I'm extremely happy, and hopefully, one of the concerts before the end, maybe have someone speak on the subject to the audience there, because it's very important for us to not, you know, to spread this as well. So want to thank you on behalf of the city Baldwin Park. So who are we presenting this to? Does someone want to say any words? Do we have the person, or, you want to say some words? Yeah, whoever's organizing.
I guess I got designated. Mayor Lozano, city council members, all community members of Baldwin Park. My name is Ruth Padilla King. I work for the Kaiser Permanente Educational Outreach Program here in Baldwin Park. Behind me, I have the privilege and the honor of working with our NAMI Club representatives. NAMI is National Alliance of Mental Analysts. So these are our club participants and actually officers from both Baldwin Park High School and Sierra Vista High School.
Awesome.
And the main goal of our club is to really de-stigmatize mental illness and really kind of focus on mental health, and so this is one of the first chapters of many things that we want to see happen this academic year and really provide them the platform for advocacy and work in the, in the community, starting at the school. So thank you for this proclamation, and thank you all for all your hard work.
Thank you, appreciate that. Why don't we have the group come up, we'll take a picture with everyone, and we'll present you with the proclamation. Thank you. Come on up, everyone. Where's Carrillo at? Oh, there he is. All right, let's have everyone. Okay, you want to come in the middle? Let's go in with you guys. All right, we, ready? Oh, yes, yes, yes. Let me get back to you.
We have more cameras.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
There we go, there we go. I have my neck.
Camera, so please.
An ankle, please.
Kind of like in a diagonal.
Oh, there we go.
You guys should have taken the photo.
Photo bombed our food that, the day of the jet, for NAMI.
Wow.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it was awesome, it was great.
Hi, good to see you guys all.
Quickly, let me, I want to introduce Angela Salazar, who is Assistant Superintendent. Did you want to share some words, Ms. Salazar?
Sure.
Sure.
I just want to say how proud I am of our students for taking on this mission, because it really is a mission to reach out to their peers and make sure that they are not stigmatized, not afraid, and that they are getting the help they need. Unfortunately, we have experienced tragedies, so it's wonderful that we're being proactive and reaching out to be a real community. One of our values in the Baldwin Park Unified School District is family, and I think our students and our employees really do exemplify that. I also want to thank Dr. Susan Coats. She is our district-wide school psychologist, a position that we created about three or four years ago, just for this purpose, to make sure we're not just taking care of the intellectual aspect of students and their physical health, but also their emotional and social well-being, and she's done great things to promote all of that. And then I want to introduce one of our teachers, Nicole Malamed. Not only is she a club advisor, but she also advocated to make this a career pathway. So we have career pathways at our high schools for medical, but this is a career pathway now for mental health, so that more students will see this as a career option, because we don't have enough providers out there to give people therapy and psychological services and get medication. It's really difficult for families to access, even when they do have insurance. So we're doing a lot in our school district to promote this, and we do thank the city for this honor of our club, and we are grateful that you're also bringing awareness to mental health this weekend, this month. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let the students introduce themselves, so we don't do anything wrong with their names, plus it's great leadership for them, and they all have a position or a role in this effort, so if they could also share that.
Hi, my name is Cynthia. I come from Sierra Vista High School. I've been a part of NAMI for two years. This year, I will be taking one of the leadership roles for my club, and on our campus, we try to spread the message of working proactively and taking measures to help students deal with everyday struggles with mental health, because we are on the ground floor and we get to see what it's like for each student to struggle, and it's a part of our culture, and it's hard to handle, but we're here for each other, and we want to make sure that we're making an impact on each other's lives.
Thank you.
Pretty much mainly what she said, but my name, I can't really top that, but my name is Alize, and I just joined the NAMI Club, and I just really want to help our further generations and just.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marissa Martinez. I'm this year's president for Baldwin Park's NAMI. It's my third year being a part of the club, and I'm just really excited to go into this year to continue to make changes in our community and help break the stigma of allied with mental illness.
Hello. My name is Jean Garcia. Can I, can I?
Go ahead.
Yeah? Okay. My name is Jean Garcia. I'm this year's Vice President for Psychology Club and NAMI. I know I'm kind of like a stranger, but like, I'm hoping you guys see me as family, because I'm just trying to, you know, do the best for our community. That's all.
Hello, my name is Anthony Martinez, and I am the PR for Baldwin Park High School's NAMI Club, and I'm really looking forward this year to try to spread and worry about mental illness and just try to make everyone feel as safe as they can with their own mental state.
Hi, my name is Paulina Frausto, and I'm a part of Baldwin Park High School's NAMI Club. It's my second year in the club. This year, I'm one of the PR officers, and you know, basically what everyone said, I hope that we can continue to help the community in breaking the stigma around mental illness.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Susan Coats. I'm, I work at the district office, and I've been a part of the community for a couple of decades now, longer than my hair shows here. You need to be really proud of this generation. They have a heart to break through and break through walls that when people aren't suffering, they're helping their peers, they're, they want to help their families, and they want to step into the future and be able to help their community. So you should be very, very proud of them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, what the heck are you doing? We pay you people. Okay, I know, we don't pay you enough. We pay you people, and you still don't do nothing. Code enforcers should enforce codes. You people were given this piece of paper, and I might as well throw it in the trash, because I don't think any of you will take care of any of this. People leave garbage all over the place. Have any of your employees, I should say, our employees, pick up anything? No. If the city does, Human Resources, or Parks and Recreation, or anybody else...Mayor, you don't even know where half of the stuff in this city is, because you know why? You don't care. The best part is, you got code enforcers, use them. Otherwise, get rid of the whole thing. And only having one meeting per month, that's ridiculous. What do you guys do the rest of the time? Party? I know, it doesn't do any good to complain, because you people...The park, so claimed nature park, fifteen inches of cement. What are you guys building? A barricade? Or, I don't know. You're waiting for war. You're waiting for North Korea to shoot a bomb over here. If they dropped the bomb, we'd all be dead. You wouldn't need any fifteen inches of cement. The park is a nature park. It's not a cement park. And you people that never go there, the only time you go there is when you have a dinner or somebody's giving you something. I live across the street...Oh, wait a minute. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Move along with public communication. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, City Staff, and members of Baldwin Park. My name is Danica Mendoza, and I'm with the Office of Senator Susan Rubio. I'm here before you all to invite you to our upcoming event, which is Citizenship Clinic. You might have these slurs in front of you. This is just...we'd just like to invite the residents of Baldwin Park to this upcoming Citizenship Clinic, taking place on Saturday, September fourteenth, in the city of Rosemead. We are asking if any interested participants can please call ahead, just so we can schedule these appointments. This is a great opportunity for residents to complete their citizenship application and get legal advice from lawyers who will be on site to answer any questions they have regarding their case. So, thank you so much, and have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Please thank the senator as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication. Good evening. Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Lozano, council members. We're here again, another council meeting, pro-life members, and we're here hoping that you have some answers for us, the questions we had the last couple of meetings in reference to what are alternatives to what will happen at the facility where Planned Parenthood has purchased the building. And then, we found out that they also purchased the building next door to that one in the corner of Sterling Way and Main. So, we really would like to find out what has been done, or if any conversation has happened amongst you. I know this is probably something that may not be as serious to you as it is to us as a community, but we really, really would like your help any way possible, at least some form of communication to find out, you know, what is an alternative. We understand that by right, they have the ability to do, you know, what they do best, abortions. However, you know, we'd like to come together and say, you know, let's work together and provide an alternative. You know, I'm for women's rights, believe me. However, I'm not for abortion. You know, I really appreciate the women that fought for us, you know, for our rights to vote, women's rights for better pay. I'm all for women's rights. However, it's very difficult to swallow, you know, killing a fetus, a baby, another life in the woman. I get it. I understand a lot of women say, "It's my body. I can do whatever I want with it." But where are those limitations? You know, here, you know, there's conversation about moral compass, what is right, what is wrong. You know, we learn through our parents, you know, what is right, what's wrong, don't lie, don't steal, things like that. So, you know, really think about what is right when it comes to Planned Parenthood. You know, I get the fact that they provide women services, and I'm all for that, but they're not the only ones that provide women services, to test for STDs, to test for pregnancy, to provide all those free services that are for the low income or the people that can't even afford any of these services. I understand, but there's other places that these people can go, and if there's not one nearby, let's create one. Let's build something. And especially, you know, you have this specific plan that proposes to build future housing just fronting this facility that Planned Parenthood plans to provide services. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your name?
My name is Teresa.
Teresa, thank you, Teresa.
I do have additional signatures. I know my time is up.
Sure. No, that's fine. You could hand it over to our City Treasurer, Maria Contreras. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you. So, that's about 10,000 signatures now.
All right, thank you. All right, move along with public communication. Hello, good evening.
Hello. My name is Dora, and, hello, Mayor, and council members.
Thank you.
And I was here before, and I spoke against Planned Parenthood, as every lady's here, against. I just want to, right now, that the students that were here for the suicide, this is what I feel Planned Parenthood is creating. It is creating a culture of death. You know, and I really think that you need to contemplate on that. You know, these students are suffering, and, you know, by having this clinic here, what are we telling them? That it's okay to kill an unborn child? That it's not a child because it's a fetus? It's not a baby? We have to back up these children. You know, we can't say, oh, you know, we don't want suicide, but yet, we're killing these unborn babies. I hope you're hearing, Mr. Hernandez, because I see you looking down at something. I was taught that you look at a person.
Okay, let's continue. All right. Thank you.
And, so, yes, I mean, you know, you just got 1,500 constituents from Baldwin Park. You know, we are your constituents. We do not want Planned Parenthood here. I noticed that they were at your fair, your street fair, well, our street fair, but I just want to stress that you really need to really think about Planned Parenthood. There's other things that you said that takes money, and I guess we need to use the money to buy them off and use it for housing. I know that Ms. Avila mentioned that last, at the last meeting. So, please support us, your constituents. You do, and we'll support you. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, move along. Good evening.
All right, good evening, Mayor Lozano and City Council members. My name's Frank Ebner, and I'm here also to speak on behalf of affirming the quality of human life, the infinite value of human life. There's...I'm not sure exactly where to begin, because I had a couple of things to say, but I guess I could start with the disconnect. We have Giovanni De Pedro, what a wonderful musician he was. I mean, I went to some of his recitals, fantastic, and he was...he went all around the world, you know, with his musician ability. He gave of himself. He was selfless in that respect. Coach Casper, fantastic coach, great teacher. I remember the last time I spoke to him, he had just come back from Europe. He was a track and field fanatic, you know, years and years after he retired from Baldwin Park Unified. All the students that are here for suicide prevention, again, life-affirming, okay, let's help the people that need help, okay, when they're struggling with that challenge, you know, that they have. Baldwin Park Unified, they say their value is family. And have a family if Planned Parenthood is going to be destroying the family. I mean, that's just a simple fact. I'm here to speak the truth, and the truth is that we can all agree on certain qualities. One of them is respect. Is there anybody here that disagrees that we should have respect for each other? Planned Parenthood is built on lack of respect. They don't respect parents. They don't respect the parents of children who are pregnant. They don't respect the parents of children who are in the classroom. I'm a teacher. Students come up to me every day, and they say, "Hey, Ms. Ebner, how you doing?" I say, "Hey, every day is a gift. Every day is a gift." Imagine all the children, the human beings that have been aborted by Planned Parenthood. One of them could have been Giovanni De Pedro, Coach Casper, any one of us. I mean, here's a book that was brought up last time, last month. It's perfectly normal. Go on Planned Parenthood's website. It comes out at fourth grade. Planned Parenthood has curriculum for fourth graders, and you don't have to go very far before you see, you know, people that have nothing on, and they say it's perfectly normal, masturbation, perfectly normal. And then, the Me Too movement comes up and says, "Hey, these men who are masturbating in front of me, they're not respecting me." Well, Planned Parenthood is getting a clientele based on lack of respect. Is that what we want in Baldwin Park? Is that what we want for our fourth graders? Is that what we want for our families?
No.
What do we want? Do we want to value family? Do we want to value respect? Do we want to value human life? We don't know what human life is being put out because we haven't given it a chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Moving along with public communication. Thank you. We'll give it over to the City Treasurer. At this point, move along with public communication.
Good evening. The other day, I stopped across the street from here, from the Baldwin Park, to let a man cross, but then, I had to tell him to stop because the other car was not...I saw him that he was not going to stop. And I remember that a year ago, or more than that, it was approved to put some kind of cross light or something, and it hasn't been done. So, I just want you to remind you to go back and look what happened to that thing that was approved before somebody gets killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, move along with public communication.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jorge Peña. I'm an attorney with Christ the King Law Center. I spoke last month in this meeting regarding Planned Parenthood. I'm here to oppose the attempt by Planned Parenthood to build a clinic in the city. It seemed encouraging what I heard after the comments I made, after the comments that were made by the public after the last meeting regarding that I was here. Apparently, it seems like there were plans to, well, at least discussions regarding getting that property that they wanted, perhaps sold or used for other purposes. That seemed encouraging. I don't know what's going on after that. Just wanted to reaffirm again my opposition to Planned Parenthood here. I heard the statement last time about something awful supposedly President Trump said. I don't want to bring him, discussion of him here, since, I mean, that's a national issue. We're here at the local level, but I want to emphasize that this issue shouldn't be a partisan issue. It should be something that everybody agrees on, Democrat, Republican. I know there was a time in this country, maybe forty, fifty years ago, where this issue was not a Republican, Democrat, liberal, conservative issue. This is something that everybody pretty much agreed on, the right to life, the protection of the unborn. But then, all of a sudden, that decision came down, the abomination that probably exceeds in horror, the Dred Scott decision that said that slavery supposedly was legal in this country, the decision we know as Roe versus Wade. And then, all of a sudden, it became a partisan issue. But that issue, like I said, shouldn't be partisan. Our Constitution, our Declaration of Independence says that we're endowed by our Creator with the right to life, life at first, and then liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And our Constitution even says, you know, the Fourteenth Amendment, "No state shall deprive any person of the right to life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall any state deprive any..."nor shall any person be deprived of the equal protection of the laws." Well, what about the unborn? Doesn't seem like they have the equal protection of the laws in this country. So, once again, this shouldn't be a partisan issue. We should all agree. Planned Parenthood should be here. It shouldn't be anywhere in this country. That's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, sir. Thank you. All righty, good evening.
Give me a translator, please.
Sure.
Mrs. Avila?
She...you want...did you want...you want to translate from here?
It's better over here.
Okay. Thank you.
Good Spanish. Buenas noches. Una de las cosas que quiero traer primero antes de cualquier otra cosa es el olor que está sacando la de esta de Brookly.
The what?
Que tienen permisos en La Fuente, La Fuente y Little Ramona.
Okay.
Okay? Where está el Henry Verstein? Otra vez fui a almorzar ahí con un amigo de West Covina. Me dice, "Aquí se pone bien, loco uno."
Good evening. One of the first things I want to discuss is the smell that's coming out of Brookly, on Puente and Ramona. He talked to some people, and they said that you can get high off of the smell.
Eso es la primer cosa. La otra cosa es que les dio unos retratos de lo que está pasando aquí en la ciudad, comenzando con el parque.
I also want to discuss the pictures that I gave you of things that are happening here in the city.
En Walnut Creek, los metimos allí, agarramos retratos. Los retratos que están allí no es la mitad de lo que es. Es un cochinero. Cualquier contrato que tienen allí con el contratista o el presidente de allí, o lo que sea.
We went into Walnut Creek and took some pictures. Those are not all the pictures, but we took some pictures, and it's a mess in there. Whatever the contractor is doing is a mess.
Los dos millones que dio la Blanca, que los dio para nosotros, no hemos mandado los retratos esos a Blanca para que mire exactamente. Yo sé que estuvo aquí el fin de semana. No tuve la oportunidad de platicar con ella.
The two million that Ms. Blanca Rubio gave us for that park, I haven't had the chance to show her the pictures. I know she was here this weekend, but I haven't showed her the pictures of the mess.
Otra cosa es que sobre la ciudad, pegando allí a Kaiser, el cochinero que tienen allí, le dije al señor Guterres hace dos meses, estaba un couch allí, y un cochinero, y luego pegado al parking lot de Kaiser, a la mano derecha yendo pa' Palm Park Boulevard.
Also, I had called Mr. Guterres of the mess that's over there by Kaiser. There are couches and just a mess all around the Kaiser area.
Cada día pasan como unas, yo digo unas quinientas, como cinco mil personas que pasan por allí en los carros. Muchos son mis amigos.
We probably have about 5,000 people going through there daily, and some of them are my friends.
Y me dicen qué cochinero tienen aquí en la ciudad. ¿Quién no tienen trabajadores para que levanten esas cosas?
They say to me, "What kind of mess do you have here in the city? Don't you have workers that handle that?"
Son cosas que cualquier persona que trabaja por la ciudad mira, para y lo levanta. Pero la primera cosa que hacen es que agarran retratos. ¿Para qué agarran retratos? Agaren y sobran las cosas y limpian la ciudad de Palm Park.
Those are things that city workers just go by. They should go by and just pick them up, but instead, they go by and just take pictures. Why are you taking pictures when you can just pick them up?
Una de las cosas que he mirado yo, andan nomás gastando gas los trabajadores. No andan haciendo su trabajo. Va bajando para arriba y para abajo. También cuando hacen las yardas en los parques, después que dejan allí, queda un cochinero también.
I've noticed that the workers just drive around the city, just wasting gas and not doing anything. Also, when they do the grass at the parks area, they leave a mess.
También aquí en el Morgan Park, cuando separan los bases, allí es un cochinero. Cada mañana deberían agarrar y limpiar donde paran los bases. Pasa otra persona que no es de la ciudad y dice, "¿Y este cochinero qué es?"
Also, at the bus stop, especially here in front of Morgan Park, there's a mess. Every morning, that trash should be picked up. People going by there, they see the mess.
Necesitamos que agarren unas personas que sepan qué es lo que están haciendo, que no se la pasen en la oficina y no hacia allí. No hacen...no tienen el valor que las comunidad del Palm Park, donde otras ciudades son viviendas ellos. No les importa. Esa es una de las cosas que tenemos que hacer.
We need to get people that care and value the city the way we value the city. They don't live in our city, so they don't value it.
Otra cosa, la Fraser yendo para la High School, y la Tracy y todo, deberían ir en la mañana. Agarramos retratos también de eso, pero vamos a mandar a usted mayor para que miren quién fue el que le ideé esa, y dónde está el estudio que tiene que ver eso.
I'm also going to send you pictures of Fraser going towards Sierra Vista to...so you could see, Mayor. I don't know who had the idea of that.
Cuando duraba unos cinco minutos para llegar a la Sierra Vista High School, duró media hora, porque no pasan los carros ya.
We used to take five minutes to get to Sierra Vista. Now, it takes half an hour because the cars don't move fast enough.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, move along with public communication. Anyone else? Oh, thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
What binds us together, all of us, each of us, is that we're leaders, leaders of our community. As a teacher, I was made aware of that. One of the things that we want to do is raise awareness, awareness of what is happening in our community, what affects us day to day, moment to moment. Los Angeles, a sanctuary city, recently attacked even by our own government. We're offering sanctuary. What is sanctuary? Do we understand the meaning? Is it something just holy? What does it mean to each of us? It means protection. It means an awareness that some things in life need hope. We come to those decisions by being aware that we are all called to be leaders, to understand there are bigger things in life than personal gain. We must protect our children, the youth. We must be aware of the decisions that we make day to day, whether they're small or large. We may not be a sanctuary to many people, but we pray and hope that those who wish to destroy life, and they're well-named, we know who they are, but the main purpose is abortion. We can put names on things and make them good to hear. Planned Parenthood, recreational marijuana, medical marijuana. We can put names on things and know that what's really behind that is they're hiding things. But we, as a community, must be aware that we have a greater responsibility, a moral I thank you for my...for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak under public communication? If not, I will now declare the public communication closed, council members. What's it saying? I just want to, first of all, I want to thank the new librarian for being here. Introduction, Christina, thank you very much. So, I look forward to working with you, and I'll, of course, visiting the various events that you have there as well, and keep up that enthusiasm that this library has presented to the residents of the city of Baldwin Park and beyond. So, I would like to thank you. Also, I want to address the Planned Parenthood. Of course, we've been in contact with the Planned Parenthood. Of course, they're not willing to budge on any type of negotiation directly with the city at this point, so I just want to make that very clear so that everyone is well aware. And as said from the beginning, you know, the fact that it doesn't fit in Baldwin Park for one, let alone insulting a church right across the street from it. So, obviously, that kind of leads us to believe that that's not a concern, and it should have been from the beginning. So, I want to make that very clear. Even though we still continue to see what possibilities there are for the city and whether there are potential avenues, even though it's limited, because, as we mentioned from the beginning, there are constitutional rights that every business throughout the...while throughout the country has a right to locate or purchase... has a right to locate or purchase property and, and move forward from that point. But the unfortunate part is that it happens to be in the wrong place in the wrong city. So I just wanna be able to let everyone know that statement. And Teresa, you, I just wanna say that you touched on a very, and I asked your name. This past weekend, Sunday, I was doing my running at the Santa Fe Dam, where I normally do early in the morning. And I was stopped by a female who indicated to me, she, I guess she's not a resident, she says she wasn't a resident, or she may or may not. And told me straight out, this is the second time straight out, that I don't have a right to tell her as a female, and me as a male, how to govern her body. And I'm glad you covered that because, as we know, Teresa, there's, and you mentioned, you mentioned some of the positive things that the organization provides us while in between that. And you're the first person that actually has made that, and you made an impact on me, and I wanna let you know, and that's why I asked you for your name. Wasn't a very friendly conversation with the person after that, but she made it very clear. Went to a major lecture over me, and of course, I stood there and heard her out and, and ran off after that, decided to just keep on running. And she yelled something that was very nice towards me, but nevertheless, that's a reality. Because we have to understand that there's two sides, and I, and, and as the mayor of Baldwin Park, you, you, you walk a very fine line, a fine, fine line in between, in between what you support, what you don't support, what you potentially could, could support. And I'll, and I'll say to this date, it's in the wrong place and the wrong, and the, and the wrong city. Despite that, maybe someone else may tell me something as I'm walking, but that's just, wanna let everyone know, that, that in particular. At this point, council members have any, yes, council member.
I just wanna share, I had, I had the opportunity to do a homeless outreach on August the 25th.
Yes.
That I invite all council members and mayor to contact the chief, and I would recommend that you do the homeless outreach. I did it with Lieutenant Finley, also with Officer Israel Rodas, Corporal Noel Cervantes, and Officer Rick Olgas, along with Monrovia Police and Almonte Police. And let me tell you, it's heartbreaking to be out there, to see how many homeless are out there. Some of them by choice, some of them are not by choice. We heard of a lady that was a nurse, lived in Huntington Beach. Five years back, she got hurt. She's homeless since. So there's a lot of families out there that are homeless. We walked the wash, talked to different people. We handed out information. The officers were great at talking to the people. They, they really opened up to them. However, you know, I feel it's, it's a Band-Aid approach. It's a great approach, but I think we need to do more. We heard the reason why they were homeless because the rent was too high and they couldn't afford it, so they got evicted. We heard of a gentleman, a couple, I talked to them, they lived under the bridge in the wash. He parked his car in a business because he had nowhere else to park it, because that's where he lives, in the wash. Next morning, he gets up to go to work, the car is gone. So my point to this being is that the homeless outreach that we're doing is great, the officers are doing an excellent job, but they can only do so much with that. We can give them the information and, and they told us they're waiting on, on housing. A lot of people were waiting to hear from housing. There's not enough housing, but there's a lot of homeless. So I, I do invite you to go out, out there. It'll make you feel completely different about this problem. And that's why I'm asking my colleagues to please look into the transitional housing for all these. California has failed a lot of people, and I feel as a city, we need to do something. We can't save the world, I understand that, but we can do something more. And I, I think we can start with transitional housing because the people that I came across, they wanna change, they wanna do better, but they can't do it on their own. They can't do it from the streets. Like I said, the gentleman, his car got stolen, so now he take, has to, besides from living under the bridge, now he has to take a bus to get to work. And they're trying, but they, they can only do so much. So I feel we really need to work on the low to moderate income housing here in our city. We need to work on that transitional housing. Like what the gentleman said, we need to value human life, and we need to value it more. So I, I ask you that you take those rights with our police officers and see the impact that they're making. These homeless, the homeless people are actually walking up to them when they see them because they know what they're doing, the outreach that they're doing. But I don't feel it's enough. They can only do as much with the money that we have, but I feel as a city, we can do more. So if we can really look into that, please, I'd really appreciate it, and I invite you guys to go out on that outreach and get to talk to some of these people, go under the wash, go under the bridge, and see the conditions that they're living in. It broke my heart. And we had just been discussing, it can happen to any one of us at any given moment. I can become disabled and suddenly lose my job and not have a place to live. It could happen to you, Mayor. It can happen to any one of our audiences. And it breaks my heart. It makes me wanna cry right now. So I feel we're not doing enough as a city, and we really need to step on it and, and move forward with that affordable housing, low to moderate income housing. I know, again, we can't save the world, but we need to do something, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for putting that together for me.
Yeah, and let me, let me just, so the general audience knows, State of California last year voted on Proposition HH, which literally, I don't know how much statewide, but we, the supervisor, the supervisors allocated, is it about two million, three million, Manny? Count me out on the number for the studies in this area.
It was several million dollars for the study of the San Gabriel Valley, but it's all, it's throughout Los Angeles County.
Right, and then part of it, just to let the general audience, there's a joint venture between the city, South Almonte, Almonte and the city Baldwin Park to actually build an actual, an actual facility to be able to house and do the actual transitioning of, of homeless individuals. So is the city active at this point? Absolutely, unequivocally. Because again, if you look at these, at these, at these particular initiatives that have taken place, and as a matter of fact, for the audience, actually, place it in the, in the, in the now so that individuals know, when is the next meeting? The very important key meetings, and, and there's been inroads, but could you talk about, a little bit about it for me, Manny?
Yes, yeah, there was actually a meeting this morning and staff attended in the city of West Covina. But the actual study that you referred to, Mayor, is a study to find a facility within the tri-city area, which is South Almonte, Almonte and the city of Baldwin Park. So it's not actually to build a facility, it's to identify a property so the county could come in at a, at a later date and build a facility that would house some of the less fortunate in our community.
So what are we looking as far as like, what are they looking square footage? Are they houses or what do we?
It's, it depends on if, what facility that they, they find. It could be a facility in the city of Baldwin Park, or maybe South Almonte or Almonte. It could be a twenty-bed, a thirty-bed, a hundred-bed. It just kinda depends on the facility that they identify and the facility that the county would wanna operate. It wouldn't be a city facility.
Right.
It would be within our city parameters or South Almonte or Almonte.
Part of the tri-city. Now, I'd be curious, is there a time, is there a timetable as far as when, when they anticipate on allocating, or excuse me, on actually pinpointing a particular area from within the tri-city areas?
Yes, right now, they're, they're working on the infrastructure, so they're conducting studies. And I would guesstimate probably within the next two years, they will probably identify a funding. It's probably not as quick as we would, we would like it, but it is something in the works. The problem didn't happen overnight, so it would probably take, to get out of this situation, it's going to take a few years to make some improvements within our community.
All righty, okay, all right, thank you. I just wanna add that I know Alejandra offered something immediately. I mean, I know that, that we do fund through the community block grant. What is it, the amount that we allocate for, for homeless assistance? Are we aware?
Well, for CDBG, I think we fund well over a hundred thousand dollars in the food pantry, motel vouchers and things of that nature. It, it definitely helps out the community, but there's always more that we could, we could do.
Yeah, and let's also place that on the newsletter as well so that people are aware of the actual funding itself. And of course, you know, I've, I've actually referred several of the homeless and also housed in some of the hotels here. So this primarily just a, just an overnight type of, so it's not, it's not a long-term solution, of course. But just wanted to mention that for the general public purposes. Yes, council member.
I just, Ben, if you can correct me if, if you need to. I know there's other programs out there. I know this particular program, we have to wait for the funding, and it is a two-year program.
You're right.
But there's also like Mars, I keep mentioning Mars Place because there's other programs like that, that they come. They even offer to come and look for land here in our city, correct? They can find the land, they will purchase the land, or there's different ways to go about it. And where they can build the transitional housing, which means transition. It's a place where they come, they live, they provide the services, whatever services they need, they have wraparound services. They get them ready, get them, make sure they have a job, and then eventually they move out to their own place, and then we house more people. So I don't remember how many, it's not a lot of homes at a time, but I feel if we can help
One, two.
One out of ten families, that's a start. So that type of building is what I'm looking at for right now, and that would be a lot quicker than waiting for the two-year, for that whole process to go through. Companies are ready to come in, they're nonprofit, to buy the land themselves. And then, again, Ben knows a lot more about it, but I know those options are available. I've seen them, I've walked in them. People take pride in living in those places, and they're eventually ready to move out because now they have a job, a steady place to live, and now they can go out and rent a place for themselves. And again, we need to work on, on affordable housing here, a rent control freeze, a rent, a rent freeze so that our tenants are not getting kicked out. That's what's displacing a lot of these people. And if we look into all of that and work with it together, I think we can make a big difference here in our city. Again, we can't save everybody, but we can make a difference, at least to some families. So I think it's very important that we look into that, Ben.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
I just wanna mention that Eurico Espaza.
Yes.
She's been really, she's been working very closely with, on this issue with the regional entities. And I had an opportunity to join a call. It was for the San Gabriel, San Gabriel Valley COG, and they're trying to create this Regional Housing Trust Fund. And in, on that call, I really saw how Eurico was, you know, a leader in, in that call and, you know, really following closely and working closely with the surrounding cities so that we can be at the forefront of a lot of this, you know, the homeless funds and, and also the plan, the kind of the regional plan. I know that we are working with the tri-cities, Almonte, South Almonte, Baldwin Park, and in some cases, we've received funding. And so we will be the lead administrator, and then in some cases, you know, South Almonte or Almonte. So I really wanna give a lot of kudos to Eurico and the work that she's doing under the supervision of Manny Carillo and our Department of Recreation and Community Services. And there is a lot that's happening. It's just, it's not happening at the pace that we would like to see it, right? And so I definitely understand your compassion and your sentiment towards the homeless. And I do, I do wanna recognize that Eurico and Recreation Community Services have really been following this and collaborating in ways that we haven't done before. And so I'm, I'm really glad to see that. And that's, that's new, not only internally with our police department and some of the other departments, but also with some of the surrounding cities, and then also with entities like the COG. So I feel like we really are getting ahead, and I know this because I've observed. But in addition to that, I also wanna say that we really have moved to create affordable housing opportunities, and I don't wanna lose sight of that either. You know, we've, we, we do have several affordable housing projects in our city that serve the seniors, and we're seeing a lot of seniors being displaced for the reasons that you mentioned, you know. The cost, the cost of housing is increasing. We're seeing that in our city. And so I'm so glad that we do have these affordable housing apartment units, such as GNK, Telacoo, and those are years, you know, even before I came in. But I'm just glad that, that that trajectory was set long ago. And even more recently with Rome, we're moving forward with yet another Rome project. And again, it's in the name of bringing affordable housing to seniors, to families. And so that coupled with the homeless policies, I think, that we're developing here in the city and regionally. And then, you know, other initiatives that we're looking at, I think that we, we're all saying, we're speaking the same language. And I just, you know, wanna reassure that we are working in the same direction.
And I know, I know we're working towards affordable housing, but again, I feel we need more low to moderate income housing because affordable housing could be affordable to somebody that makes over sixty, affordable to somebody that makes over a hundred. It depends what you look at when you're talking affordable. So we need to look at low to moderate incomes, not just so much affordable. That's what I'm thinking.
And that's what we've been pushing. We do have low, we have low, we actually have very low, low and moderate income affordable housing here in the city. And so, you know, I'm sure that this, our city staff can take an inventory of that and provide that information to us.
We do, we just need more.
Moderate income is actually not as common as, let's say, low income because of, you know, it's always just been kinda one of those areas. But we also need moderate income because there are families, we, we hear from families that are being pushed out east because, you know, maybe they grew up here, but they can't, they can no longer afford the cost of, of housing. So I agree with you, and I just wanna assure that I think we're all saying the same thing, we're all speaking the same language. There is a need for very low, there is a need for low income as well as moderate income. And moderate income, you know, that's gonna serve more of those families, those working families that we also wanna keep here. And we get approached all the time, how can my, you know, children become homeowners here? Well, we're trying to create those opportunities. So again, and at the same time, the homeless, that's, that's a whole other population. So I do wanna assure that I think we're all on the same page when it comes to this. And, you know, we need to get Eurico to come and give us another update because there's a lot of work that's happening, I think, you know, weekly, monthly, and so maybe we can have her come and present.
Again, I invite you to do that homeless outreach. It'll really make you see things differently. It did me, so, and it's heartbreaking, definitely.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I just wanna address a couple of issues. One, I did speak with an organization called La Voz, and they addressed the, the housing issue. And they talked about a lot of housing opportunities and different ways that we can help in the communities. And one of the points that they made to me that I thought was interesting is how the city, or our staff, maybe our council, defines affordable housing. And I think that with the circumstances today, with the economy, the affordable housing definition that we have is, as Councilwoman Alejandra said, it, it sort of serves those that are at the sixty thousand dollar range or at a higher range than is really talked about. Today, before all of you came, we had a special meeting and discussed some of the new projects that are coming on. And they are affordable housing, and, and some of them don't, but they don't address those that are in a transitional position. Those that lost their home because they were ill or sick or for whatever reasons, they need to be put back into a housing. You know, Alejandra, who works for the school district, or Councilwoman, talked about how a number of those that are in our school district, a number of families still live in cars or vans, or they're, they're not living in a house. They have a very unique position. You'll talk to teachers and they'll talk about how these families don't live in a house. They go home, you know, they, they show up to school the next day, coming from a, from a car or wherever they live in, or a one-bedroom apartment that houses, you know, two or three families. And it's very difficult for a, a young child to be able to grow up in that environment and to study and eat and do all the things they need to do, and yet show up to school to try to get an education. So I think we need to reevaluate affordable housing and look at that transitional housing and how to serve that population because a lot of them are here in Baldwin Park, are going to our school districts. And I think we need to look and maybe connect with the school district and start to evaluate it, our housing situation from that standpoint. But I, I did talk to them, and they wanted to introduce myself and city council members to different organizations that do housing, that would be interested in coming to the city and make proposals. Some of them would look at different sites, possibly in this area by City Hall, which is blighted where we have that little white house in the middle, and look from there all the way across to where the clinic is and down up to the, they were looking at the, at the car wash. And I mentioned the car wash to them because the owners there, I believe, would like to, to sell their business. So there's opportunity to look into that area and somehow fit a transitional housing, maybe in that area if it works. maybe in that area if it works. So, you know, I'm talking to some groups, and hopefully they'll be interested, and they'll make a proposal to the council so that the whole council could evaluate it and see what would work best for the city. So there is, I know some of you asked about where, you know, some discussions are going, and there's some companies talking to the city, some that are talking to different council members, and will make a proposal hopefully eventually to go in that direction. But on the issue that many of you brought up, about Planned Parenthood, I share the same sentiments. I appreciate that all of you came here and expressed your concerns. Mr. Ebner, I appreciate your thoughts and your analogy about the different moral compasses that one that Planned Parenthood has, and yet there's kids that gentlemen are doing indecent actions in front of them, and then that gets in the paper. And so there's like this contradiction of morals of you're teaching kids one thing and then in the public, newspapers are bringing out the opposite morality on those issues. And something that we just need to be concerned about and to be able to address those concerns with the different clinics. And that's one of the concerns that I have, and I know some of you brought out, that the name Planned Parenthood doesn't really define planning a family, means ending it. And so the name should be changed. It's not really planning a family. So I just feel that, I don't agree with their approach to planning a family or to educating a family in the fashion that they do in the books that they bring out. Most clinics just do, you know, that's the healthcare, they deal with the diseases and the issues that are out there. But I just don't agree with their approach to the community. And so I kind of share the same sentiments. I encourage you to continue to go out, and hopefully somebody will come forth to make a proposal, and maybe we could get something else there in that, instead of having the Planned Parenthood, maybe we have something else. So I just wanted to share that all with you. And also, on the minutes, I changed from a couple of meetings ago because I did talk more about my position with Planned Parenthood, and so I had staff just kind of type out everything I said so that what I thought about my position is reflected in the minutes. So that's on these minutes, and it was changed from a previous one because I just thought the summary was not expanded enough about what I had talked about. So with that, one more thing on another topic is on code enforcement, if we could have, I know that we recently in code enforcement have staffed up, our efforts in that department. And Shannon, with the agreement of the council, if we could come back, and if our new code enforcement manager can come forth and just talk about sort of their approach to code enforcement and some of the changes that they made. I've noted in some of your emails that you sent to the council how the new code enforcement is going to operate, and how you divided the city up into different districts so each staff member is able to get out there a little more, and hopefully we'll have stronger code enforcement in the next couple of weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and go into the consent calendar. So councilmembers wishing to pull any items out, we have from 1 to 12.
I'd like to pull one, please.
One, okay, item, one off.
We do five and nine.
Okay, one off, please. Item one and five and nine.
Where is it?
All right. Councilmembers wishing to pull any other items? If not, at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass with the exception, consent calendar, with the exceptions, items one, five and nine. That is my motion.
Second.
Who's seconded?
Hernandez.
Councilmember Hernandez, at this point, any objections? See none, so move. All right, the first one reads, city requests by Councilman Alejandro Avila, the city Baldwin Park's warrants and demands. Councilmember?
So I just have a question on these, there's no page numbers, so. On the payments to Carlos Valle for clean, cleaning outside the restrooms, what period does this cover? Because that's a lot of money for cleaning bathrooms. There's one, two, three, four, five in one page for $4,800, $340, $1,000, $4,820.
What page is that? Was that EBS in general?
I could expand on that. That is our cleaning contractor, and he cleans all public restrooms at the parking structure, City Hall and the various parks.
And what period does it cover?
For one month.
That's a one month?
Yes.
And then?
And that's seven days a week. They traditionally clean AM and PM.
Okay.
So twice a day.
All right, so then there's another one. I just wasn't clear, what are we paying for here? That's a lot. So they're covering the whole city?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, hold on a second, I folded the other page. Then there's another one, also Carlos Valle, one, two, three, four, five payments, another one for $4,700, $340, $1,400, $900. They did, one's dated eight, one, the other one's eight fifteen.
So it should be cleaning. I do not see it on the, there is no pages on here.
No.
But he does, he has a contract with the city council. I don't recall specifically the amount. I believe it's approximately $120,000 a year to clean City Hall, which is all three floors, including the basement and the jail, cleaning the community center and all public facilities, including the restrooms, and cleaning the carpet as well as the council chambers and polishing the floors citywide. It was a competitive bid, and he did receive the contract.
Okay, because this just says specifically restrooms. So when I see cleaning restrooms for this much money, I'm thinking, wow, I'm going to go into that business. Because it's, this one specifically Hildes Elise Park, and then this one just says outside restrooms at, and it doesn't say where.
And I think that's billed on the first and the 15th.
Yes, it is, every two weeks.
And two separate dates.
Okay.
But we can get you a breakdown and a copy of the contract and the bids, and you can see the pricing.
I'm sure that happened a long time ago, but I don't know what we're paying for. Also, Gentry Brothers, one, two, three, four, five payments. I know they're doing a lot of work, so you can show me what all these payments are paying for, what parts of the projects we paid for, please. I think that was it. That was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, I will make a motion to approve item number one. At this point, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hernandez. Any objections? See none, so move. All right. So at this point, we'll go over to item number five, which is requested by Councilman Hernandez, the Code Enforcement Division update. Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring this up, and more importantly, just want to give Ben an opportunity to just kind of highlight the name change and the direction that the new staff that you have will be conducting.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. The Community Development Department was very pleased to hire a code enforcement, or now as we would like that you would approve the name Community Enhancement Supervisor to oversee all community enhancement, formerly code enforcement activities in the city. His name is Jose Martinez, of no relation to myself, and we would be happy to bring him forward to talk about what we're doing, what we're currently doing and plan to do in the future. But I will mention a few of the items tonight. First and foremost, we do, would like to change the name of the division from Code Enforcement Division to Community Enhancement Division to reflect a new attitude in how we conduct code enforcement types of activities. We already consider ourselves a business-friendly city. We also want to be a resident-friendly city. We want to be educational in our approach, and we want to seek compliance, not necessarily the issues of citations and admonishments, but compliance. We want compliance in keeping our city clean and beautiful. And so we would request that the city council approve the new name of Community Enhancement. We're also, in the coming month or so, you will note that our community enhancement officers will be wearing new uniforms to reflect that they are now working under the direction of the Community Development Department, not the Police Department. And they will be working in assigned areas of the city. We'll be using other things such as daily logs and having additional collaboration with the Public Works Department and bulky item and other programs. We basically want to use our community enhancement officers in many different ways that they haven't been used before. And the, sort of the ideas and the possibilities are endless. We don't want to work them to death, but we do want to be creative in our approach. And so this is just the beginning, and we'd be happy to report back in the future on the progress. But there's just a little taste of what we're thinking about right now.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Just given, you know, the conversations and the pictures and the things that we've received today, and again, not only a business-friendly, but as you mentioned, residential friendliness, not to necessarily seek out individuals for ticketing or for violations, I should say, but more for compliance and to continue to beautificate, beautify, excuse me, our great city. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much.
So I'll move to approve, and you want to?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, moving on.
Or do you want to move to?
I'll go ahead and second. And any objections? See none, so move.
He's moving to approve, and I'm second. I'll second.
All right. All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we're going to go over to item number nine, which is the authorized purchase of police motorcycles. At this point, Councilmember Hernandez, sir.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring this up, just to show the thriftiness, but also the, you know, the making sure that we're spending, you know, each of our dollars well-spent. Chief, you could just highlight, you know, some of the efforts that your staff went on here to find these resources for yourself.
All right, let's try this one more time. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Mayor Lozano, councilmembers. Just want to add that in collaboration with the Almani Police Department, we were able to locate four used BMW motorcycles, 2016, at an excellent price, $13,300 each, opposed to a $30,000 brand-new motorcycle with four motorcycles and a cost saving of close to $65,000. So with that great collaboration that we have, we're able to locate and purchase these.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any objections?
I look forward to seeing them out on the streets.
All right, thank you. What kind are they? What brand?
They're BMW.
Ooh, I drove one about three weeks ago, by the way. I sure did. But it wasn't a cop one, though. But yeah, I did drive a cop one one time, we thought we were going to get Harley-Davidsons here. The owner from Brent LeLaws drove it out, and that was a nice bike, by the way. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go over to the successor agency. So at this point, I'll go ahead and the successor agency to dissolve Community Development Commission of the City of Baldwin Park's warrants and demands, and also SA2, which successor agency is the same one. So I'll move for both. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we'll go down to the reports of officers, so it's 13, which is a review of commissions, applicants. Want to move this over and finalize the next one? All right, okay, we'll definitely do it, and it will be done. Where's Chris at? Oh, he's back, oh no, he got a point already. All right, so at this point, just a joke back there, Chris, seeing you're awake. All right, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move for adjournment of the city council.
Second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into opening up the finance committee. So go ahead and, we have the consent calendar, so the treasurer's report, I'll go ahead and move for approval. That is my motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia. At this point, any objections? See none. At this point, I'd like to move for adjournment. That is my motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so can someone hand me the, where's the?
The housing.
The housing, I just had it here. Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Avila. All right, at this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park Housing Authority. And at this point, we have consent calendars, items one and two. I'll go ahead and move, that's my motion.
Second.
Second by who? By councilmember, my colleague, Ricardo Pacheco. All right, so at this point, I'd like to move for adjournment. But before we do adjourn, I just want to mention, Mr. Gutierrez, and I know it was mentioned about some of the streets, we need to look at the, figure out a plan to address the sidewalks and weeds and some of the areas that are part of the city. But I'm seeing it, someone has to be seeing it. So we're going to have to be more aggressive in that. Mr. Martinez, that's in the back there, so make sure that we address those areas, and if it's Public Works, then let's do that. And we're definitely have to pick up, pick up the pace and make sure that we're addressing all those, all those particular, and especially, I was mentioned by the two gentlemen earlier, the couches and all kinds of things that are dropped off out in the street. I mean, if I'm seeing them, I don't know why we're not seeing them. So we could send that across as well, Mr. CEO. Actually, my campaign last year, I sat in one that was pretty comfortable, by the way. And, well, whatever, but nevertheless, that, no, it got picked up after I did, but I was like, I need to sit somewhere. So it's very important for us to make sure we address it, because in some areas, you see there weeds, it's dead grass, and it's just like, come on, you guys, we're seeing that, especially on the Boulevard right here. So let's make a plan to get out there. So, Ms. Martinez, so you're going to have a tough job up there, so we're going to make sure we're following up, and then also bring some type of progress report to the council members, at least at the end of September, to see what we're looking at. Actually, why don't we set up a study session with Mr. Martinez so he could give us a cover? At the end of September, okay with you? Not that you have to have everything, but just give us a report and let's follow up. And then Public Works, the same thing, let's look at these areas and the, because I know they're picking up some of the stuff, but just some that are just visible, and I don't know what's happening there. So we could address that, I would appreciate that. Okay, yes, and before I forget, and I want to, thank you, City Legal Council, the announcement, this is announced as required by the government code section 5495-2.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. So I just wanted to note that for that. All right.
Mayor, really quick, I just want to add that when I did that homeless walk, we walked into that wash behind Walmart right off of Puente Avenue. It was a disaster, there was a lot of trash inside the wash and all along the fence. I immediately contacted Sam, and he was out there that same day, everything was cleaned up. He sent me pictures back. So I think as long as we're notifying them, they do come out there quickly because it was, I still have the pictures, I'll show you the pictures, and he cleaned it. That afternoon, it was gone. Thank you, Sam.
That would be nice, thank you. And also, one, kudos, Mr. Benjamin Martinez, I liked your presentation yesterday, I mean, this afternoon. Okay, so I want to thank you, keep up the good work, looking forward to a lot of those potential businesses coming to town. All right, so at this point, I will now move to adjournment. That is my motion. Oh, yeah, excuse me. Now, we're going to close the city, this one. So at this point, is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Viva Baldwin Park! So we're going to go into, we're going to go into a closed session for no more than hopefully two and a half seconds, two and a half minutes. And we'll be reporting now. So city clerk, don't leave. Thank you very much. Lulu? Thank you very much. City treasurer? Thank you.
I don't think there'll be anything to report out.
I'll report nothing out.
Oh, man.
All right, first of all, we don't have nothing to report out, so at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to close the study session. Thank you. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, thank you. I got to go.
All right, I'm stopping.